Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move right on to potential action items. And our first action item is number C1 on the agenda. Yale Crest Harvard Heights Local Historic District. The Chair recognizes Charlie Luke.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map to establish the Yale Crest Harvard Heights Local Historic District.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Luke and a second by Councilmember Menon Hall. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and it's unanimous. Thank you. We are on to item number two, which is a rezone of 1932 North 2200 West. And the Chair recognizes Councilmember James Rogers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the council adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map for the parcels located approximately 1932 North 2200 West Street from AG2 to BP. I further move the council adopt a legislative intent initiating a review of the zoning map for properties located on 2200 West between North Temple and 2100 North to consider rezoning those parcels to M1 Light Manufacturing. The intent is for the administration to review the current zoning to determine if rezoning these properties to M1 Light Manufacturing would be more appropriate and help maximize economic development along this corridor.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Rogers and a second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I think I'd like to address this just briefly.
Please.
The reason for the language intent for this, legislative intent, is that we have property, it's right next to the airport. It literally abuts the airport and we are not maximizing opportunities for economic growth there. We're going to continue to have entities come in and apply for a rezone again and again and again. And this is a way for us to spur that so that we don't have to do this every single time.
Any other discussions in the motion?
I'd just like to thank our Chair, Mr. Rogers, for thinking, for having the foresight to look at this. And I think that this area of town needs the economic investment and I think that this can really drive that. So thanks for noting this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and it is also unanimous. Thank you. We are on to item, excuse me, on to item D. Questions to the Mayor from the City Council. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not a very good stunt double, but I'll be willing to entertain any questions.
I have a question.
I do too.
Okay, we'll just go right in order here.
So last week, we asked the Mayor about the Housing Transmittal. She said it was forthcoming and we're just, we're wondering where we're at with that. It's a, you know, it's a priority for us this year and we want to jump right into that and make sure that Salt Lake City has the proper policies in place to set for housing.
And I think Councilman Johnston had the same question. That transmittal's on its way, got to my office on Friday. We'll get it to you so you can discuss it on the August 9th meeting if that would work for you.
Okay. Great.
Was that your same question, Andrew?
No. It's a good question.
Okay. Patrick, that was a good guess.
I appreciate it. If you had that question, it would've been answered.
I've got a question number two. Is there an update from the administration on the algae bloom and contamination?
There is, and I am going to ask Laura Briefer, our Public Utilities Director, to come up and give the update. We are on top of it. Laura's and her team have been doing a tremendous job keeping us advised, but she can speak better for herself.
Laura, welcome. Could you just tell us, give us your title and as your introduction?
Sure. Laura Briefer, Director of Salt Lake City Public Utilities Department. So just an update on the toxic algae bloom, or actually the more technical term is the harmful algae bloom, or the HAB. And, and so we had, this was, this issue was actually discovered on Friday last week where there were some elevated levels of this harmful algae bloom discovered in Utah Lake. The state, Utah County Health Department closed Utah Lake to public recreation and use because of this. And, and just to back up a little bit, this harmful algae bloom is harmful because exposure to both the bacteria involved in the bloom and potential toxins released by this bacteria could cause health impacts to people, animals. And so, so it's really a public health concern. And so as the weekend unfolded and additional investigation and sampling occurred by the various health departments, by the State Department of Environmental Quality, we started realizing that this harmful algae bloom could be more wide-reaching across the valley. Some samples have detected some elevated levels within the Jordan River. So precautions have been taken throughout the Jordan River in the Salt Lake, in Salt Lake County and in Salt Lake City to restrict access, post-warning signs at public access areas. And in terms of the city, we also, so Public Utilities manages a system of irrigation canals as well as other communities in, on the east side and west side of the Salt Lake Valley that take, can take water from Utah Lake to deliver for irrigation purposes. From the city's perspective, as we started understanding that this, these cells might be present within that water, we've actually taken steps, starting this morning, to replace that water resource with other sources of water. So various parts of the system now are going to be receiving well water and stream water rather than Utah Lake or Jordan River water. That'll take a few days to transition the entire system to that, to that additional water source. I'd like to stress also that our drinking water sources are not impacted by the situation.
Laura, we have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Charlie Luke?
Sure. Two questions. So first off, I know that there are a number of tributaries in the city that feed into the Jordan River.
Right.
Is Public Utilities testing those tributaries as well?
So the tributaries in the city would include City Creek, Parley's Canyon, Red Butte Stream. And so those, those systems, there are, the Jordan and Salt Lake Canal would be the discharge point for Utah Lake water into those systems. Anywhere that the Jordan and Salt Lake discharges to those systems, it discharges to that part of those streams where they become piped.
Okay.
With the exception of Liberty Pond, which may have received some mixture of Utah Lake and other water as it's connected to that, that part of the system. We closed the, the area where that Utah Lake water could get into Liberty Park Pond, but we're testing that. And the testing is actually being conducted tomorrow when the laboratories can take those samples.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second question, I know that Rose Park Golf Course and Glendale Golf Course use either canal or Jordan River water as secondary water sources.
Right.
Have we switched it over to culinary on, on those courses or are we still using the river water?
Yes. So Lisa Schaefer and I have been working closely together on this and I understand that the courses that use secondary water have switched over to culinary water.
Okay.
So we've been working with them on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Couple other questions. Derek Kitchen?
Hi, Laura.
Hi.
Can you help me better understand what caused this algae bloom?
Sure. So, so first of all, there is a ton of information on potential causes for this on the State Department of Environmental Quality website. And there's a lot of work that's being done to identify causes and impacts and duration of the impact. My understanding is there are a number of conditions that need to be in place in order for this type of algae to grow. And one of them is warmer water temperatures, still water, so water that doesn't have a lot of movement in it, and, and just a lack of sort of mixing of the water, like with wind or storms or anything like that. And also Utah Lake is at historically low levels right now, too. And all of those conditions contribute to an algae bloom like this. And one more, there's also the potential for nutrients to come into the water, waterway, too. So nitrogen and phosphorus that are typically found in agricultural and urban runoff, sometimes wastewater treatment plant runoff, too.
Would you attribute this to local, is this global warming? Is this our local experience with global warming?
So, a water quality incident such as this is actually something that if you look at the impacts of climate change with increased air temperatures and the possibility of increased minimum water temperatures, this could be something that is attributable, or a situation like this would be attributable to effects of climate change potentially.
So how do we brace for this going forward?
How do we?
Do we need to make systemic changes or is there something that we can do to, any investments we need to be making? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that there, there's a concept of integrated water management and that's really, you know, tying together this water supply, water quality, scenario planning for, for climate change or climate variations. And, and so I think there are a number of strategies to prepare for something like this or to adapt or to be more resilient. I think one strategy that the city has in place right now, watershed protection is, is a big strategy for us that could be translated across the system. And, and, you know, I think, I think the group, the community really does need to come together and look at cause and effect and the policies in place and sort of the technical, the technology behind it to, to assess what can be done in the future. I think we're learning a lot of lessons from this.
Thank you.
Andrew Johnson?
Yes, he said that it does not affect the drinking water currently in Salt Lake City at all?
No.
Okay. Fishing and farming off the river for folks who are doing that, affected, not affected how much?
So the, the State Department of Agriculture has issued some warnings to the agricultural community in terms of application of this water on to crops and produce in particular. And there's also, there have also been some warnings and cautions with, with related to fishing.
Okay. So don't fish?
Maybe don't eat the fish.
Don't eat the fish?
And that'd be advisable at this point?
Well, and, and one of the interesting issues with this situation is there's still a lot of research that's being done on impacts, public health impacts. So, you know, I know that the State Department of Environmental Quality, the State Department of Agriculture, and the local health departments are all kind of combing through research to better understand sort of the impacts that we might be facing. There hasn't been a lot of research, so we've been taking very precautionary measures because our, our first goal is to protect public health.
And may I add, Councilman and Council, we are notifying people along the river, the homeless people living along the river, as well as the refugees who may be fishing for food for their families. We're notifying them about this aggressively, hand to hand, face to face, and using our networks to get the word out to the communities that we think might not get the word out through regular channels.
Okay. Just to follow up to that, does that include individuals who have property rights to the Jordan River? I know that in District One, there, there are very few that actually have rights to pull water out of the Jordan River. Have we notified them?
I don't know that, the answer to that, but we'll find out. I don't know that I have a list of, of those individuals, too. And I do want to add that Salt Lake County has stood up its joint information center. And so questions like that, how we get information out to people that might be pulling water, you know, there's been a lot of media on this, but some individual contacts could be helpful, too.
Thank you. Any additional, yes, Sarah Menon Hall?
Sure. We don't know much about it, it sounds like at least enough that we can forecast, but is there a timeframe we're looking at for reopening to the pond or clearing water? Any ideas that way?
So for, for Liberty Pond, there's, there is no longer any Utah Lake water that's entering there and we're able to flush that. And we're, we're actually flushing that part of the Jordan Salt Lake Canal today and tomorrow with other water sources. And we'll be collecting a sample tomorrow and there's about a two-day turnaround time so we'll know for sure. The good thing about Liberty Pond is it's aerated as well, so the water is moving in that system. So that's, that probably protects it, too.
How about the overall system?
The, the overall algae bloom situation, that's, that's a question we all have all over the Salt Lake Valley. At this time, it doesn't appear that the bloom has dissipated, but, you know, weather conditions can really affect that. Unfortunately, the weather forecast for the next week doesn't have any weather system moving into it. And so from, from our perspective, we're gearing up for, you know, having this, managing this event and situation for the next couple of weeks and maybe longer. So we're, we're planning for a longer event potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing, not for Laura, actually, but for the administration with the refugees who find food by fishing in the river. And it's, it is, I know, understand, not necessarily a direct path to get those communications to that population, but in doing so, I wonder if we might be able to offer some sort of food subsidy in the meantime, that this is a very real piece of, of diet for a piece of our population and whatever assistance, temporary relief we could offer them in terms of that, that food source. I think it would be a smart move for us to pair that communication and see how we can complement that need.
Thank you, and we will do that. That's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Patrick. Those updates. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And are there any additional questions for Patrick representing the Mayor? Thank you. Before we move on to our next item of comments, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that we have a group of visitors with us today. And I'd like to invite Robert Lockett to come up to the microphone and tell us a little bit about it. But we have a group of law students who are visiting from Moldova and they're spending a couple of weeks here looking at our judicial system and, could you tell us, welcome, Robert, and tell us a little bit more about the program?
Well, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Robert Lockett. I'm the Deputy Director of the Levitt Institute for International Development. This is an NGO that contracts with an agency of the US State Department to promote rule of law initiatives in Eastern Europe, particularly in the Republic of Moldova. Using volunteer lawyers and judges, we teach a two semester class there in US Trial Practice at six universities and their National Institute of Justice. At the end of the school year, there's a mock trial competition and participants in there go through an inter-process and we had 21 of them that were selected to come to the US and Canada for a three-week internship. We're fortunate to have nine of those interns with us in Utah for three weeks. They're, the beginning of their second week now. So they are observing trials, meeting with judges, other government officials. This is their first experience seeing city government work and they are learning how the US system works. And as they are rising stars in their home country, hopefully they will take some of what they learn here and implement positive changes in their homeland. So thank you for the warm welcome that you have afforded our people.
And could you have them stand? I mean, normally we would torture them and ask them to come up and introduce themselves, but we won't do that tonight.
And I should also mention, we have two of our staff of people here, our husband and wife attorneys from Ukraine. So we'll have, have you stand up, Skvad and Ksenia. These are as fine a group of young people as you will ever meet.
Welcome. We are thrilled to have you join us and I know that our meeting is absolutely riveting. So thank you for attending.
Yeah, I just, I have a comment. Thanks for being here. And I just wanted to note that I'm really happy to see so many women, females, over here. That's great. I'd love for, you know, I'm excited to see what you do back in Moldova and I think we need more female leaders all over the globe and so it's exciting to see you here.
I think that was him encouraging you to run for a political office, is what I heard there, so. We'll now be moving on to comments to the City Council. This is the opportunity for anyone to make two-minute comments to the City Council. Again, I will remind you that we want to respect all individuals and their perspectives, so please no applause, booing or jeering or cheering. And please make every effort to ensure that people feel comfortable in their presentation. Our first card is from Douglas Cotant, followed by Cindy Cromer.
Well, I'm going to have to tell you that this, this discussion about the algae should, should be handled in your work session. And I'm also going, going to say that I have had some problems over at the New Bran and I sent reports to the City Council and to Mr. Kitchen's. Apparently, a few days ago, my landlord yelled at me and he, and he was so loud that, that apparently a few other people heard him or heard him yelling at me. And I contacted Housing, or I wrote a note to Housing about it, sent one to you folks, and I was, I was wondering if you had the wind of this and possibly investigate the possibility of talking with Housing and getting together with some other groups to have Mr. Crawford fired and also to have Gino, the owner of the Royal Eatery Restaurant, soon to become the Apollo Burger, have him fired and, and have the New Bran Hotel put under, under new management because I am getting tired of being yelled at. So tired that I'm thinking about moving out of state. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Cindy Cromer, followed by Senator Karen Mayne.
I'm back. I'm still Cindy Cromer. I avoid repeating myself because if I do, children think I'm getting old, which is true, and adults think that I'm tiresome, which is probably also true. My comments tonight are revised versions of my remarks that I made in 2019, I'm sorry, we're not there yet, 2013 regarding development rights and development agreements. I risk being identified as old and tiresome tonight because there are three proposals headed to you for decisions which have referenced possible development agreements. This is astonishing. I can never think of one point in time where we've had three development agreements under discussion. Moreover, they're all in historic districts. Two of them are in the South Temple District and one of them is in Central City. The fact that all three are in city historic districts creates an additional hazard in using development agreements, one that I did not address in 2013. So in 2013, I argued that the pressure for development agreements is an indication that the zoning ordinance is not delivering what we want. If you must enter into development agreements, they are less bad when they address issues determined at the time of construction, such as density or height, rather than ongoing use. Ones related to use are the nose of the camel in the tent. And that is number two on your list from 2013. Now with three proposals in historic districts, I'm adding another concern. As you can tell, I worry about everything. And that is that a development agreement can actually undermine the authority of the Landmark Commission regarding height, mass and scale, and setbacks if not drafted with extraordinary care. In other words, your development agreement can become like a new base zone that, that conflicts with the overlay zone or the historic preservation zone. And as specified in the Central Community Master Plan and the Preservation Plan, the mismatch between the adopted zone and the overlay zone is highly problematic, but now I'm repeating a comment from earlier this year and so I'm really going to stop. But thank you and I do hope that you will draft any development agreements with extraordinary care. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Senator Karen Mayne, and the Senator's card is the last card I have, so if there's somebody else who would like to address the council, if you could raise your hand, a staff member will contact you.
May I?
Please.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you. I came a few months ago and asked your help on busing for the county and for Salt Lake City. And thank you very much. It's worked. We have more bus routes and I think they've got it now. They call me every time they put a bus route in, so thank you so much for your help. I hope in front of you, you have a resolution. I'll tell you the history of this. I produced a resolution and it was passed in the legislature about Utah workers and Utah firms building the prison and that passed. And the procurement officer tells me that is a tool for them, for procurement, for those construction companies and those workers in the prison. We, you know, Utah jobs, we're going to build something. And so this is, you have dominance over the airport and this legislation I'm going to produce to my colleagues, but it won't be until the first of the year. I have no doubt that it will pass. And your procurement is a, is a different umbrella. And I was advised to come here by procurement because you are bidding all the time now. So it's the same legislation. It says work in the airport is encouraged to be done by Utah workers and Utah firms. So I'm going to run this in January. I hope that you will look at this and if you feel that there's something you can do as a council, because you have dominance of this. If there's any questions, I would be open to that.
Thank you, Senator.
Appreciate it.
I would ask for a follow-up from our council staff because I believe several years ago, in particular around the theater, we did draft some language around procurement and preference shown to local firms, but if we could do some follow-up on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
I, I appreciate that and this is dear to my heart. There's so much construction and I think we need to have Utahns working. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That was my final card. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our item E, new business. We're looking at item E1 as an ordinance. Yes, Councilmember Luke?
I move that the council adopt the ordinance amending various sections of the city code to reflect the correct department names in conjunction with changes made during the adopted annual budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're on to item number two, 911 Dispatch Software.
I move we adopt.
I'd be looking for a motion to adopt the agreement for the inter-local.
Mr. Chair, I move the council adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of an inter-local cooperation agreement between Salt Lake City Corporation and Salt Lake County with respect to the county's transfer of $3,750,000 to the city for the purpose of financing. This is the wrong inter-local.
Yeah.
I'm going to stop there.
That's why I stopped.
And I'm thinking we may not have a motion sheet on this particular one, but we just need to look at a motion to approve the inter-local agreement concerning 911 Dispatch Software.
And that's exactly right. You should also suspend the rules probably since this is the first time it's occurred.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move we suspend the rules and adopt the inter-local agreement with Salt, with the Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City for the 911 Dispatch.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Now I'll be looking to Councilmember Menon Hall for unfinished business. Item number one, an inter-local agreement.
Instead of finishing my sentence, I'll start it over. I move that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of an inter-local cooperation agreement between Salt Lake City Corporation and Salt Lake County with respect to the county's transfer of $3,750,000 to the city for the purpose of financing highway construction, reconstruction, and maintenance projects for, or for financing enforcement of traffic laws.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion to that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. Item number two, Housing Trust Fund Loan, North Temple Flats.
Mr. Chair, I move the council adopt a resolution authorizing a loan from the Salt Lake City Housing Trust Fund to North Temple Flats LLC for the North Temple Flats project.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There's one dissenting vote, that's Councilmember Menon Hall. The motion carries. Item number three, Housing Trust Fund Grant. Uh, item number three, Housing Trust Fund Grant.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Council adopt a resolution authorizing a grant from the Salt Lake City Housing Trust Fund to the Community Foundation of Utah for the Low-Wage Worker Pilot Program.
Second? Uh, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and it's unanimous. Um, our remaining item of business is our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second? There's a motion and a couple of seconds to, uh, approve the consent agenda. We'll go with Councilmember Menon Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we are now officially adjourned.